Hey, everybody. Let's get started. Grand Forks City Council for Tuesday, February 16th, under Item 1, General Business 1.1. Welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler. Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavani.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
With Cor.
Great. Under Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance Led by Mr. Weigel.
Under the Pledge of Allegiance led by the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Mr. Weigel, under Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Mayor didn't leave me with any announcements. I know he's got important work that he's doing at the Grand Forks Air Force Base tonight, so thank you, Mayor, for that. And Item 2, Awards, Presentations, Appointments and Proclamations, 2.1, Legislative Committee Update. Mr. Burnstrom, good evening.
Thank you, Council President Sandy, members of council. It's a pretty quiet week regarding the state legislature when it comes to Grand Forks issues this week. We're coming to crossover at the end of next week, so that is when, you know, the Senate takes on the House bills, the House takes on the Senate bills, and they kind of start the process over again with probably half the number of bills. The House has a lot of work to do. For instance, today, they just had just under 100 bills on their agenda, and they got to 23. So they have some work to do in the next. They may have a few late nights, so some of those bills that we've been following may pass late at night here in the next week or so. A couple of things we are following. There are, one, two, three, four, six bonding bills out there, whether they're Senate or House bills, and they're getting amended into each other. Some are getting, you know, are getting do not pass out of committee and stuff like that. So we're following all of them, expecting that there's going to be some form of bonding coming out of the state legislature this year. It's probably going to be some sort of hybrid of all these bills. So what we've communicated to our legislators, we're in support of bonding for grants and loans for transportation and water infrastructure with all-in 2% max, at least 30 years, some sort of formula like that. If they can land on something like that, we'd be all for it. Bills are kind of all over the place when it comes to that. One bill that I believe is tied to the bonding bill, even though it's not bonding, is the gas tax bill. So the current gas tax in the state of North Dakota is at 23 cents. There's a bill out there that's been amended up to make that 29 cents, and they have re-referred that back to committee, and I'm assuming that gas tax bill, and again, this is making some assumptions, may be moving with those bonding bills because they're all tied to, you know, transportation funding. So how those bills come out, if there's some bonding, does gas tax go away? Do they amend gas tax lower? We'll see how that goes. In for Grand Forks, the city is not providing any testimony this week. First time this session, first time in a couple of sessions, we're not providing any testimony. The North Dakota Police Chiefs Association did provide testimony. We talked about this bill a couple of weeks ago, House Bill 1340, and it's tied to entry on the private property. The Chiefs Association provided testimony in opposition to this bill. It was heard on Monday. Sheriff's, several sheriffs and various law enforcement provided testimony in opposition. They did not act on that in committee, but we'll keep an eye on that one. And then, as I said, crossover next week, the following week is Grand Forks State Legislature. We're hopefully, we'll be able to get down there and have some chance to talk with our legislators face to face. And I'll be providing a report to crossover as far as bills we follow, bills that are still alive, you know, support opposed, depending on the bills that are still alive. As soon as I have that report, I'll get that to you guys as well. But that will come out in that first week of March. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Burnstrom? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Burnstrom.
Thank you.
On item 2.2, COVID-19, vaccination update, dashboard update, and citizen, there was a citizen comment. Mr. Doolitz, are you gonna share with us this evening?
The Council President Sandy and members of the council, I'm Michael Doolitz with Grand Forks Public Health. I'm going to provide an update on our COVID-19 dashboard, as well as provide a little bit of a vaccine update as well. So overall, when we look at our dashboard, we made a lot of progress in the past week. Unfortunately, today isn't as rosy as it was last week when we did get down into the green on our dashboard. We have had a slight increase in our cases per 100,000, moving from just under 10 up to 14 per 100,000. We have had a decrease in our testing that we've been able to absorb pretty well, but a slight increase in our percent positivity that has put us back into the yellow. Looking at our case rate comparison, I zoomed this in a little bit, taking out those outliers when we had the outbreak, to give us an idea of where we're at right now. You can see we did dip down into the yellow for our cases per 100,000, and it has steadily climbed back up. I'm not sure if this is part of an overall rising trend, or if it's just, you know, kind of an aberration or anything like that, but it is something that we will keep an eye on. When we compare it to other communities, or other peer communities in the state, we are seeing similar rises in other places, which does lead me to believe that it could potentially be, you know, something more of, you know, a fluke after the holiday than, you know, something sustained. Our overall incidence curve does continue to kind of flatten out. Our projections are looking good to, you know, keep our case rates relatively low. Moving over to the vaccination side, we've made a lot of progress in vaccination over the past couple of weeks. We are up to now 15% of the population of Grand Forks County having received at least a first dose of COVID vaccine, and that's about 8.5% for a population that has received two doses of vaccine, so just short of 10%. The third number on there is the 10.5%. That is the two-dose coverage rate for the vaccine-eligible population. So for the two vaccines that we currently have available right now, the Moderna vaccine and the Pfizer vaccine, the Pfizer vaccine can be given down to 16-years-old, the Moderna down to 18-years-old, so that does cut out a large part of the population that can get the vaccine. So to get to 60%, to get, you know, what we presume to be herd immunity, we have to get a larger portion of that 16-plus population covered, so we can reach that 60% for everybody. Overall, we have about 5,900 people who have received their two doses of COVID vaccine. When we look at Grand Forks and Polk County, making up the metropolitan statistical area, fortunately, Polk County's been kind of following our trends pretty well. Their vaccination rates have been pretty strong. Some people from Polk County are eligible to come to Grand Forks County and get vaccinated, and that's because of our partnership with Altru. We are using Altru's allocation at the Allera Center in addition to our own, and so we also need to vaccinate individuals who would otherwise be eligible to get vaccinated through Altru. And likewise, some people from Grand Forks might get vaccinated in Polk County. You know, it's all a federal allocation. You know, they do assume that there's going to be some crossing back and forth. Overall, one county's not shorting the other county in vaccination that we've seen. You know, and it's, we're so closely entwined that we want to see strong vaccination rates on both sides of the river. Looking at our kind of self-entitled quest to 60%, so 60% being the presumed herd immunity rate, and that's based off of studies that the CDC has been using in their, you know, in kind of their planning process for herd immunity. So Grand Forks is kind of knocking it out of the park right now compared to our peer counties at 8.5% of our population having two-dose coverage. We have been kind of competing back and forth with Cass County, but we did make that big jump in the past week, you know, in part to the extra COVID vaccine allocations we've been getting, as well as, you know, I think we have a pretty good system for getting vaccine to people, and that is starting to benefit us. Looking more regionally, North Dakota is leading our peers, our surrounding states and provinces, you know, with Manitoba being in last place with about 1.9% of their population. Overall vaccination rates, again, this does, you know, this does paint a really good picture for the work that we're doing in Grand Forks County. When we look at all doses given per 100,000 population and compare it to our peer counties in North Dakota, as well as the statewide average, we are, you know, we are kind of setting the pace as far as the amount of COVID vaccine that we are getting out. When we compare, when we look across age groups, Grand Forks is a little bit more in the middle. When we look at the 80-plus and 70 to 79 age groups for getting their first dose of COVID vaccine, Ward County is beating us in that area, as well as Burley, but we do have a strong rate in that 70 to 79 age group. We did get to the 70 to 79 age group a little bit earlier, so below 75 age group a little bit earlier compared to the other Looking at our first dose vaccine by age group within Grand Forks County, you can see the under 19 to about the 50 to 59, a lot of those people got vaccine doses early, primarily based off of their employment as healthcare workers, first responders, or other Phase 1A priority groups. And then you can kind of see when we move to the Phase 1B, you can see kind of how things have exploded in those age groups as we've added those groups on. When we look at our 80-plus age group, we are kind of right in the middle of everybody else. One final thing I want to touch on, on vaccine rates and COVID in general, is looking at our cumulative deaths. Those do seem to have flattened out quite a bit as we've gotten away from the major outbreaks that have been happening, so that is, that does seem to be one benefit of the lower case rates that we've been seeing lately. So looking at our bottom line, we still are doing very well on vaccination in Grand Forks County this past week. Unfortunately, due to the weather that's been happening outside of the area, so Chicago area on south, it did delay the arrival of our vaccine for tomorrow's event, so that will be getting rescheduled, but we will still be getting a full allocation for Saturday, so we should still be able to keep this up pretty well. We have reached the green level on our dashboard. Hopefully, we can get back down to green. We did see a little bit of an increase in hospitalization, including an increase in individuals with, that are hospitalized in critical care. That's something we will be keeping an eye on. You know, there has been a little bit more variation in hospitalizations lately. And then, you know, we would always do well with more vaccine if we could get it out. Our model is seeming to scale well as we've kind of grown it from where we started, so the more vaccine we can get, the more we can get it into people's arms. And then opportunities are essentially the same as last week. You know, our threats, we did see a decrease in long-term care-related COVID testing, which did lower down our tests per 100,000, which did increase our percent positivity a little bit. Looking at how we can, you know, kind of better depict where we're at in that area, we have looked at potentially, you know, adding in those antigen tests, because they are making up about 50% of our total testing right now. So like the testing events that you're seeing at, you know, at the malls in Grand Forks, we offer it to individuals at the High Performance Center testing events, and then some entities have started using antigen testing as well. With that, I am open to any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Doolitz?
Yes, if I may, Mr. President Sandy.
Mr. Weber.
Mr. Doolitz, the reference to 60%, you indicated that that's according to CDC guidelines. Do we actually have a fixed percentage that's determined to be herd immunity at this point?
Councilmember Weber, so just to clarify, that's, you know, I don't want to overstate that it's a CDC guideline. So where I pulled this from was a Journal of, a JAMA, Journal of the American Medical Association article, where they discussed, you know, where they discussed the, you know, the needed rate, the needed rate of vaccination for herd immunity. That, you know, that article has been cited by the CDC when they are talking about the rates needed for herd immunity. Basically, what they say is it's between about 55 and 65 is kind of the range for herd immunity, and then they gave the number of 60 in that article as kind of the midpoint in there. And so that's where we're getting that reference from for that 60%.
Thanks, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Thank you. Nice job. Moving on, Item 3, Public Hearings and Second Readings of Ordinance. Stories that, 3.1.
Public hearing, a resolution of necessity and determination of protest on Project 8214, District 751, paving on 44th Avenue South, South 17th Street East of South End Drainway, and Project 8260, District 579, concrete blocks colored on 44th Avenue South across from South End Drainway. We did just receive one protest, but there was an insufficiency of protest on the project.
See protest. Okay. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone interested in discussing Item 3.1, please come forward and state your name. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on Item 3.1?
I'm of approval.
Moved by Veen, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Under Item 4, Action Items, I'm gonna pull Item 4.0, 4.3, 414, and then once we get this figured out, I'm gonna ask to amend the agenda to move 418 to the end of the agenda. So we'll pull 418 as well. Anyone interested in this? Weigel, do you have any others to poll?
Nope, all of approval.
Well, I haven't read them yet. Have to read them in first, so if there are no other items to be polled, yes, Mr. Veen?
I think it's, did you say 415?
Nope, 14.
14?
Or 14.
I would say 415.
You would like to poll 415?
Councilmember Veen, if you're interested in that lot split, that one is 414.
It's 414.
No, no.
Do you still want 415?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll also poll 415. Any others to be polled? Hearing none, so that leaves under the consent agenda, 41, 42, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 410, 411, 412, 413, 416. Motion by Weigel, is there a second? Second by Veen. Any other, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And can I get a motion to suspend the agenda and move 418 to the end of the agenda? Moved by Weigel, is there a second? Second by Weber?
Yes.
Great. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 4.0.
It's the 2021 NCHC Frozen Face-Off Postseason Tournament at the REA Economic Development Financial Contribution.
Mr. Veil.
Council President Sandy and members of the city council. I'm also joined this evening by the REA General Manager, Joey Hotson, and also UND Athletics Director, Mr. Bill Chaves. So I'm gonna ask Joey to come up here after and talk more details of what we're planning. We're asking this evening, and thanks for having, allowing this to be on the agenda, to provide $100,000 that'll go towards the Frozen Face-Off, which is the final tourney for the NCHC. As we move forward, and Mr. Hotson will tell you about some of the details and kind of the fast action that we got here today. Council President Sandy, you recall back in 2015, we were really trying to move forward with a, more of a festival that would kind of drive the growth between the REA and the Allera Center, and really using our CVB at the time, or Visit Grand Forks, and how to create something multi-year. And we haven't been able to execute anything at this point in time until today, and so we're asking that we use a portion of those funds. They have grown from a start of $250,000 to $269,000, so we are asking this evening that we would use 100,000 of those funds for this multi-day thing. I think it really fits the spirit of what we're trying to do. We're trying to drive growth in our community in a multi-day, and similar to the shop local initiative that you just approved, really trying to help our businesses that have been hurt the most, and in this case, it's bars, restaurants, and hospitality, and I think this is gonna do a lot of good to that end. I also want to point out, with our partners at Visit Grand Forks, they've also are participating with $25,000 in cash incentive, as well as all the great things they do from an in-kind perspective, so they're really gonna be a really great host on behalf of Grand Forks. So they're another partner in here, and obviously, Joey will talk about the Ralph and all that they do to bring things to Grand Forks. So with that, I would ask Mr. Hotson to come up and kind of give us the overview of the tournament itself. We think it's a great opportunity to use some of these funds and drive growth in our community. So with that, Joey.
Good evening, Mr. Hotson.
Hey, good evening, members of the council. Thanks for having me. So as Todd has mentioned, we're very excited to host the 2021 NCHC Frozen Face-Off Tournament. It is a very unique event for our community. It's an event that's normally held at the Xcel Energy Center in St. Paul, and Bill Chaves and all of his colleagues and the membership at the NCHC have worked like crazy over the last couple of months to try and make sure that a season occurs, and then maybe more specifically here, that a season concludes at the end of the year. So Todd mentioned there was really a lot of moving parts on this event. At the end of the day, Bill and his colleagues were trying to, I think, decide between six options for a playoff scenario at the end of the year, and there were multiple options on the table for multiple different cities, and different tournaments, and playoff series, and lengths. So this came about very quickly. In this COVID era, there was a very rapid escalation of interest in a single-elimination tournament, and together with our partners at UND Athletics, we bid aggressively on it and went after it. We're really excited to secure that event for our community. We think it's a really good balance. We think it balances off those initiatives of trying to generate some economic activity for our community, trying to get us going again in the live event business, but also very aware of our responsibilities to the community, and trying to balance those public health initiatives. When you talk about our attendance at the event, we think it's a very balanced maximum capacity of 3,000 people, so that is a physically-distanced seating layout or capacity. So we think we're checking the boxes and trying to get ourselves going again, and get activity going in the community again. As Todd said, the biggest benefactors from a commercial standpoint are gonna be hotels, and restaurants, and bars, and trying to get some of that activity going, but we've also been very collaborative with Altru, and with the Public Health Department, and with the city and others to do so in a balanced way. We're not throwing the doors open in an irresponsible way. We think it's a pretty balanced approach, so we sure appreciate the city's help and the dollars that have been provided by the city, really, in all honesty, I think are the reason the event is here. When you talk about the $25,000 from the CVB, and then the money from the city, those enticement funds, I think, separated us from the competition and the other market that we were bidding against in that process, and I think it's fair to say, I highly doubt that event would be in Grand Forks without the city's assistance. So I'm certainly open to questions, if anybody has any of those dollars, to further expand on that. Those dollars are gonna go directly to the NCHC as enticement dollars to make that event occur here in Grand Forks.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Hotson? Mr. Weigel?
I don't have any questions or comments, or quick comment. I think it's a great event. Glad to see it here in Grand Forks. It's too bad I couldn't stay here in Grand Forks for the next 10 years. Maybe if we throw another 100,000, we can get it, but if there's no other questions or concerns, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much for the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4.3.
Introduction of Ordinance Implementing Change in Electrical Franchise Fees. Proposed ordinances are attached, NOTEX Electric and Xcel Energy. Background information was presented committee whole, February 8, and information is attached to your agenda.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gastad, are you interested in saying a few words about the proportionality of franchise fees on the 2% versus 3/4%?
I'm very much interested in explaining how the math works. So I'll bring you through the ordinance and give you some background. To begin, the, both Xcel and NOTEX franchise fee are based upon gross revenues. Basically, anything they get from the sale of electricity, it's a 2%. There are some exclusions, University of North Dakota, and also sales to the city with respect to some of the lighting and things like that are excluded. With that, what we're doing is, is the amendment is to add definitions that are directed solely at the, what I described as the large volume of electricity user, and to calculate the reduced fee for, franchise fee for those. And then we're revising one section out of each of their particular ordinances or agreements, I'll call them, that imposes the franchise fee. Section 8 to NOTEX and Section 9.1 in Xcel's. There are no other amendments or additions to the change, and that's specifically noted in Section 3 in the amending clause or in the amending ordinance, that we're not changing anything else. So I'm just gonna go through and briefly go through how we get to the calculation. First, you have to start with, you have to qualify as a large, what's called a large-volume electricity user, a defined term, which is something that sells more than 20, what are called billing cycle megawatts.
Mr. Gastad?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's a problem.
I thought I would just ask you a question of the council, if they actually don't understand it, because if everyone understands the calculation, do we, because there are 12 pages of calculations, there are, and so if, we might be here until tomorrow, but if everyone already understands the calculation.
You won't be till tomorrow, but if that's fine, if everybody is understanding the calculations. I added, the reason I put those calculations in at the back is samples, so that when we're working in this in the future, somebody knows how to do the math problem.
Yeah, and I'm, again, I have.
I apologize. I had my.
No, 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 but I, of course, have a background in mathematics, and to me, your examples explained how it worked quite, quite well. It's the proportionality of the, the pre, the dollars that come in under, under the 2% versus the dollars that come in over at the 0.75%, and your examples explained it quite well, I thought, in which case, when I got to the end and looked at the examples and went back and went through the calculations again, I thought it read like exactly the way you wanted it to. So unless there are other people that want to spend time going through the calculations, I think what, more importantly, we should debate whether we want to make the change or not. Perfect. Any comments or thoughts?
I appreciate Mr. Gastad's calculations, and I'm happy to move on.
Okay. Are you interested in making a motion? Do you have any thoughts regarding the, your interest in the, making the change? Mr. Weber.
I'd like to hear some further discussion about that.
Okay.
Councilmember's thoughts.
Anyone have any thoughts on, okay, Mr. Weigel?
I'll just be brief. I think we look at different opportunities all throughout the community. We've looked at opportunities when we've built buildings downtown, we've incentivized them, we've done a lot of different things in certain areas. If there's an opportunity to try something new, I think we should look at it, and if it gives us an opportunity to attract new business here to Grand Forks, then we should take a look at that as well. So. So I'm in favor of it and I'll let some others speak before making any motion or anything along those lines.
Sure. Anyone else have any thoughts?
I'll be very brief too. I'm in agreement. Excuse me, I think it makes sense to do it, to give it, that a try. It's a very special case by and which, when we would do this. And I think the benefits outweigh any costs or risks, so.
Okay. Mr. Kavami, thoughts?
I think that this is something that's been brought to our attention and I think it's a great idea.
Okay. And I personally, as I said last week, I think it's an economic development issue. And I think if this is the, what's standing in the way of us drawing major companies to our community, then I think it's something that's worth, worth moving forward. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Weigle?
I just, I, I see we have some people here that maybe represent the companies.
If they're interested in speaking even?
Yeah. And maybe my question would be is how does, and this is completely off topic and I apologize.
Okay.
But how does the Texas thing affect Grand Forks? If anybody can answer that.
Okay.
I'm Matt Marshall with Minn-Cota Power. I just want to thank you for your consideration. I don't have anything more to add for the franchise fees. And for Texas, I'm going to introduce Milo, who is the president of Notex. And I'm hopeful he can provide some light because I, it's way over my head.
Same.
Good evening, councilmember.
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Milo Anderson, I'm the CEO and president at Notex Electric Cooperative.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. It's a very technical question. The SPP Power Pool and MISO, which is the one that we're involved in, are two separate grids that interplay together a little bit, but technically run the generation transmission assets in each one of those areas. Excuse me. What's going on in Texas is affecting the SPP Power Pool. So that's mostly western North Dakota. The Minn-Cota is part of the MISO Power Pool. So we do see a little bit of potential if things don't change. If things do change, we could see a tremendous potential for, for some impacts in our area. What we're looking at right now is WAPA substations have been affected. The other ones in our area have not. We're hopeful that the lights will stay on. But we're confident that they will. At this point, we're not asking anybody to reduce power usage. It's more of a, a grid integrity stabilization issue up here than it is power availability.
Great, thank you for that.
So Mr. Weigle, would you like to make a motion or?
Absolutely, I'll make a.
President Sandy?
Mr. Weber?
I'll move approval of the motion that was put forward by the committee of the whole last week.
Great, there's a motion by Weber, second by Weigle. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And item four, fourteen.
Final action replat of lot E, of the replat of lots A and B, of the replats of lots six and seven, River Oaks Edition located at 4722 River Oaks Circle.
I think ultimately, we're going to table this indefinitely. Mr. Brooks, a quick question. Was it the property, the owner that asked to, to table?
Withdraw. He asked for it to be withdrawn, so no need to vote on it tonight.
The property owner.
The property owner. Or, I'm sorry, the applicant. The applicant.
Can, can, I thought you had to be the property owner to ask to make a change to your own property.
Yeah, in this case, the, the applicant is acting on behalf of the property owner. So the, the actual application that we have in the office is signed by both the property owner and this individual who's acting on behalf of that property owner.
So the property owner gave the, the individual?
Yep, they were the authorized agent.
Very good, very good. So there's a motion to withdraw or we just?
It's asked to be withdrawn.
It's asked to be withdrawn, okay.
So nothing to vote on.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any questions regarding that? Okay.
Yes, actually, Mr. Erpman sent an email that we all received earlier today suggesting that the, that there may have been some inappropriate actions from either city staff or the Funding and Zoning Commission. Mr. Brooks, are, are you aware of that email?
Yeah, the email did come in to both, to our staff as well. I don't know if I read it that he thought staff had done anything inappropriate. We've actually had good conversations with him up until now. So I don't know if I read that, that he thought staff did anything inappropriate. Or he wasn't, I don't think he was happy with the result coming out of Planning Commission. But I, I didn't anticipate he would because it wasn't in his favor. But I, I certainly don't want to answer beyond that. I guess that would be up to him. And we're still going to follow up with him. Obviously, he's looking for a spot to, to build and we'd like to help facilitate that still. So we're going to follow up with him and, and still try to find him a lot to, to build on.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Item four, fifteen.
Final action, fast track, the replat of lot C, block one, Edgewood Village, first re-subdivision located at 1881 44th Avenue South.
Mr. Veen?
Mr. Brooks, my question is 45th Avenue South now dead ends in the back of those lots, right?
That, that's correct, the right of way does.
So the right of way, so 45th Avenue South now is a public right of way has, has a dead end?
Yeah, it's, it's essentially utility corridor right now that, that's potential. We've had requests from Park District in the past to potentially look at that. So we're, we're open to conversations about where that could go.
I mean, I, I think the addition, I support everything that's here. It's just that when I looked at the, on the bottom and I saw that 45th Avenue South dead ended, normally we would have a cul-de-sac or we would vacate it or do something. But just to have 45th Avenue dead end, if, as long as you guys are looking into it, that's, that's the question I have.
Yeah, and it's just right of way now. I just want to make sure that that's clear. It's right of way on paper, it's not actually a street that's out there.
No, that's, that's there right now. No, I, I understand that. But, but it is usually when you have right of way, it's intended that at a future time, a street could go in there and that street really would dead end in this case. So it seems to me like that needs to be looked at a little bit further.
We'll follow up with Park District, yeah.
Okay. With that, I would make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Mock.
Second.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Under item five, informational items, there are none.
Say, President Sandy, if I could just clarify for the record, I didn't write down as part of the vote for the consent agenda, four point one seven. And I just wanted to confirm that that was the intent to be included in that vote. Otherwise, I'd ask for a separate motion, just to be clear on the record.
Was, I believe the intention was four seventeen was included. Anyone disagree? Okay.
All right, very well, thank you.
Very good. Citizen comments, we did have one citizen comment that was posted online that came in regarding item two, two under COVID-19. A citizen is wanting to educate us on comments related to masks and mask mandates. Let's see that that gets emailed on to the county commission and to the county health officer, as well as the health department. Thank you. Item seven, approval of minutes and bills, seven point one.
Better list and engineers estimate as presented.
And a motion to pay the bills, moved by Weigle, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, item seven point two.
And the minutes from October 19th and November 2nd.
What are our moves? And Kavami, Sackens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Veon, item eight, city administrator comments?
Councilmember Sandy, or President Sandy, a few updates here. One, mental health matters, as you recall, you set aside $100,000 in COVID-related funds. We have moved forward with a coordinator position. And as part of our group, it's public schools and UND and, and others are part of that. So we have hired a coordinator. It's, her name is Ashley Nelson. She currently works for public health, so she's excited for that position. So you'll, you'll hear more about coordination going on, mental health matters, you set aside $100,000. So we have moved forward with that position and more to come on that. And the group's excited about the, and really thankful that the city funded that as part of our COVID funding and moved that forward. The second thing, and I've updated Councilmember Kavami, but there's an MPO bridge ad hoc group that's been formed. And I know Councilmember Veen and Mock are on the MPO board, but that's going to get kicked off, I think, if, as long as they approve at the MPO executive board on Wednesday. And Councilmember Kavami in it, which it was a really good choice, is going to be the city council member representative. And I think they're also looking at citizens across these different areas to be part of that group. So just so you know, that's going to start kicking off. So you'll hear more about bridges coming up as long as the MPO board agrees to move forward. They've hired a consultant to, to help along the way too. I want to, UND did sign this afternoon, the UND Lera Center agreement. So we do have a football game this Saturday, so our goal was to get that approved. And so that did get signed today. And I want to thank Mr. Gostad for all his, his heavy lifting. So he, he really made it happen and we were supporting actors and all that. So thank you, Mr. Gostad. I want to give a highlight, we, we have approved a couple of mixed-use developments. And so I anticipate some of those, Mr. Gostad is working on development agreements on all four of those agreements. I want to highlight two things, you know, whenever you deal with construction, there's always something that comes up. So we anticipate at the next committee, the whole Memorial Village. And in, in the measure of you can make it up, there's a sanitary forest main that is underneath where the, the building is going to go, just outside where the current grandstand is there. And so we're going to bring that back. We're working with the development team to what we're going to do to move forward. We're looking at replacing that forest main and getting it out of the way. So our forefathers kind of left it in the way. So just so you know, that's going to come up at the next meeting. The other thing is lines developments. We've been working on, as we call on the, on the alleyway, we've been working with the developer in that, in this case, and also Xcel Energy, because we need to look at where those power lines are and, and how to work with the developer and Xcel and also with those alleys. We're also looking at that further south alley. If you look along the Herald to Edgewood. And so we're going to look at that alley about burying those lines too. So you know, that'll come back as some sort of agreement between the developer, Xcel Energy and the city moving forward on that project. And, and also one last piece on that, the city or the JDA owns the, the parking lot too. So we'll have to work through some of those details. Just so you know, those are coming to the city council, many of those things sooner rather than later. The last thing is, in case you, you hear this Oscarville, as you recall, this city council has worked hard on trying to get that Oscarville back up to, up to, up to speed. And as you recall, that's north of Gateway Drive, north of McDonald's. We put in sanitary sewer, we put in storm sewer. And the final piece was the paving. We've sent out letters late last week and the estimates are pretty high. And, and so there's, there's various roads. Some have an 80/20 split with the city paying 80, others are fully assessed to the property owners at 100%. While they've come in pretty darn high, we're going to bring that back to you on Monday and in the committee at the whole. In the meantime, there is a public meeting with those property owners out there. So we're going to talk about some, would get their feedback, which I'm sure they're all going to say that's really high. And we're going to look at some solutions and how we can move that project forward. So just so you have to hear some feedback, we are engaging this week. And I, I would suspect we'll have more conversation with you at Monday, city, committee, the whole meeting. So thank you, Council President Sandy.
Great, thank you, Mr. Veon. Any questions for Mr. Veon? Okay, under item nine, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, nothing. Ms. Mock? Nothing, no. Mr. Weber?
Yes, if I may quickly, just my appreciation to Mr. Bernstrom for his work with the legislative committee. And to all of our department heads, we have a, a really fine reputation across the state with the legislature for the input and, and our approach. And to our, our community members with Team Grand Forks and the leadership there from Barry Wilford. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kavami?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen?
I will just add a little bit to what Mr. Weber said about the committee, the legislative committee. Actually, he's the one that takes two hours off every, every Friday to be, more than that, to be a leader of that committee. I know I co-chair within him, but he leads that. So I just want to say how much I appreciate what he does, along with all the work that everybody else is doing. Thank you.
I'm going to come back to you again, Ms. Mock. Are you sure there isn't anything here? Okay, okay, very good. All right, could I ask a question? Maybe perhaps the two people on the MPO know. What, what is the purpose of the next bridge study? The bridge study that they're creating this ad hoc group for, what is the purpose of that study?
I believe it's traffic impacts.
Traffic impacts? Traffic, cost benefit analysis related to traffic? Okay.
I believe it's traffic impacts to those.
Just traffic impacts, just traffic.
To understand the traffic flow and the impact that it would have to those records.
Got it, okay. I'm going to go back and read it again, okay. Sounds good. Yeah, no problem, no problem. I'm sorry, we have to have it?
I would have to have it.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Otherwise, everybody have a good day. We're going to retreat back to item four, eighteen. Mr. Thorsten?
Discuss the pending litigation of Rice Lake Contracting Corp. Do Business as Rice Lake Construction Group versus Construction Engineers. Joint Venture versus City of Grand Forks, U.S. District Court for District of North Dakota. Case number three twenty dash C V one sixty-four.
President Sandy, I'd just ask that you, the motion be made to go into executive session for attorney consultation on this pending litigation. Also, given the position of Ms. Mock and, and Mr. Veen, I think we'd ask them to remove themselves during the executive session.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, could I, for a request, be refused from this one? Is that what I think you do?
I don't even know, do you?
Actually, it actually have you to leave the, while we go into executive session.
Just leave the room and not be part of the conversation. So.
You need a motion for that?
We need a motion.
Yeah, let's do, yeah, let's move by Weber for both Mr. Veen and Ms. Mock. Mr. Weber? Yep, and the second by Weigle. Any other comments? The four of us, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Veen. We'll wait till you're.
Thank you for putting this last in, so we didn't have.
You're welcome. No problem.
Actually, I think that leaves five of us.
I think I have a couple as well.
There, Katie, Katie's not on the meeting, so.
Uh, she is.
She is?
Yep.
Is Katie on Zoom? I don't see Katie on Zoom and we haven't heard her talking all evening. Is she on the phone or how do you know she's on?
I see her on Zoom. There's maybe some trouble with her microphone, she's trying to say something. Not sure what's happening there, but she's here.
Mr. Sandy?
Yeah?
Cheryl said that Katie is on Zoom, she connected right, has roll call is being done, but her screen for some reason isn't shareable and they can't communicate.
My apologies to Ms. Doppler. I'm sorry you weren't able to participate tonight, technical difficulties. Okay, so I'd like to.